You guys ready? I'm ready to go. Okay, we're gonna bring those city council meetings for May twenty fourth, two thousand and eighteen to order. What will call please?
Council Westover, here. Council Warren, here. Council Baker, here. Council Snyder, here. Council Shaw, here. Council Cameron, here. Mayor Les, right.
First one, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I want to throw up my knowledge that our county's mission of liaison, boss process is here. Anybody? Um, they've got a lot of regulation updates from Phoenix special liaisons. They said nothing to report this evening. Now we're gonna move into the public comments part of the agenda. This is for those who want to comment about things or not on the agenda. Do you have anybody who wants to comment on things on the agenda? Do we have, uh, did you say it?
Yeah.
And you got three minutes.
Okay.
You can point up and write your comments to the council. And write it, just put out your name and address. Next one.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Kirsch. I work globally with voice staffs in America. And I was wanting to talk with you about some of the time about our program and some differences we offer other than the traditional voice staff program, which is career exploration, and it's a lot like vocational training for kids who are trying to do something. So I think it'd be a really great opportunity for their community and their material. And so I'm here just to consider what you all about.
Great. Let's speak a little.
Absolutely. I actually asked Paul, she's, uh, she represents a huge number of scouts in this area. And as you know, the scouts are now bringing, uh, the girls and that's a word about scouts and for the scouts over there. It's very inclusive. And what she want, what she's hoping to do, you know, just kind of taking a step from it, is to work with our, our, our city to help, help these kids get into, you know, basically community service. And, you know, giving back, you know, the agent would help the city with their, you know, like the bars or whatever, if they want to come out and do projects. I was thinking Blue Aaron Park is a great place to do some of these stuff. But, um, you know, but this isn't too much, making a big decision tonight. I did ask her to come to sort of say, hey, we're here, we'd like to serve the community and, um, and maybe we can talk about it over the next meeting or so.
I'd like to legitimize that at some point, maybe give your information over to humor which is going to be quarter. We need to connect them. For the discussion. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to talk about things that are on the agenda? Okay. Along, we have the consent agenda with a couple of items on it. Um, approved specific power of service contract amendments for being caused a civic center in a minute from May seventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Does anybody want to pull up your consent agenda? I'll continue the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
End of discussion. Hold it there, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Next item up is item number eight. Eight's resolution number zero one zero one three, Resolution of the City of Phoenix about the Jackson County multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan. Everybody go talk to us.
Sure.
All right.
I'm Kenzie, planning director. I'll try to keep this brief. I can find my place again if you. So, um, the natural hazard mitigation plan was done on a regional basis. It was coordinated by Jackson County, considering a number of small jurisdictions. We really don't have the world at all to conduct our own. And since our natural hazards are for the most part the same as those on a regional basis, it made a whole lot of sense for a lot of the small municipalities in the region to simply sign on to the creation of the document. It is regulatory of potential hazards that are likely to occur, which doesn't mean that they will, but those are actually more likely than others, both regionally and locally. Uh, the plan does not carry any direct responsibility to the city and is not regular. That is very important to know. Um, however, it does assist the city to prepare for potential natural disasters by identifying what is most likely to occur and perhaps takes mitigating steps. It also assists us if we want to apply for grants and other funding to do redevelopment mitigation as well as most disaster control. And last but not least, it is necessary to have an adopt where we are to apply for any FEMA funding. That is all.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Um, so this whole conversation around the new police station slash facility, is there potential for us to apply for FEMA money to build this?
I do not know. Uh, this would generally be for, so we might be able to make an argument that our existing facility is not, um, it is a critical facility and is not exactly constructed to critical facility standards. Um, so in that respect, yes. Um, but that would be a separate issue from basically the disasters that are likely to befall our community. But of course, should anything happen, it would be nice to have a police station where we want to stand. So, yes.
Anybody else? I guess it's on here too that we, as I say, we don't really have the essential facilities. That's not the water. Um, but other buildings built to, you know, withstand like the cascade of the earthquake.
Um, they'll probably be flattened on the ground. At least the current ones, yes. New buildings would have to comply. Existing buildings are existing buildings.
Are there any other question?
Yeah, yes, I did, actually. Um, so, so this is not regulatory, it has informational and gives you guidelines. So, does it, does it have any impact on insurance for people who are, uh, kind of, uh, FEMA insurance or those type of things?
It can benefit those with flood insurance if we do not have an adopt to naturalized mitigation plan. Um, it's possible that some policyholders would lose that coverage. Um, I had not really considered the option of the council not adopting this, but I suppose down the road that is a possible penalty, yes. So it is certainly to the advantage of our citizens to have this plan in place because it makes it much easier for them to obtain flood insurance.
Ray, do I want to?
Uh, yeah, just real briefly, I think one of the primary reasons that communities have, uh, the plan in place is that it maintains your ability to, uh, apply for and receive pretty imposed disaster funds from FEMA.
Mm-hmm.
Without it, you're really not included in a hazard mitigation plan and you run a very strong risk of losing the opportunity for, especially close disaster funding. So if you don't have a plan in place, FEMA looks at you in a different light than if you have a plan in place. So the most equitable and effective way to get this accomplished was to provide the cocktails and accounting plan.
Just another question. I'd imagine, I haven't read the whole five hundred page document, but I would imagine there's this substantial section of the question that it said for, uh, forest fires. And mitigating that and, and FEMA funds in the event of terrible ongoing forest fires.
That is certainly a hazard, um, and that applies regionally. Um, we have some communities that are definitely on the fringe, such as Jacksonville. Um, less so here, although certainly my experience in eastern already tells me there doesn't have to be trees that burn, it can be darn near anything. So those things in the late summer when everything is dry can sweep over pretty much anything in their path. Um, but not as big a problem here directly. Secondary effects, of course, with smoke, but, um, we don't have a huge forest connecting us to the hills quite as much as somewhere as the communities, but it is a regional threat certainly.
Anybody else?
No, there's a, the wording for proposed motion approval is incorrect. So when some, would someone like to make the motion now, let's tell you how to correct it. So it says, no, I moved, I moved approval on the first reading, but there's not two readings for a motion. So the progress, I mean, for resolution, for the motion should say, I move to adopt the Jackson County multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, um, prior to adopting the ordinance, there is a typo in the title on the ordinance itself. Representation is misspelled. So we might want to just fix that before it gets signed.
Is this an ordinance or is it a resolution?
It's a resolution. We do not have to adopt my ordinance unless you really want.
No. No, they have, what they saw, I just wanted to try. Does someone make the motion with the correctional note?
I move to adopt Resolution number one zero one three, Resolution of the City of Phoenix adopting the Jackson County multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
With the correctional note?
With the correctional.
Cool.
Of course.
And your dissent? All right, it's a roll call please.
Council Shaw?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Yeah.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Westover?
Yes.
Council Warren?
Yes.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Next item up is a discussion of council liaisons. Request from Council Westover. We did this early two thousand and seventeen. What do you have on your request?
Yeah, um, thanks. So, in the last couple of months, we, I'm committee together, we did have a mastery list of all the boards and commissions and who's representing and what their terms are. Um, when Eric is here, we were working on that, so I'm not sure if we stated that it probably needs another update. Um, but I think it's important for us to, such basically, um, we're probably not represented on like so many regional committees as we should be. And I'm just curious, um, who's serving on what so that we can keep that posted and then determine, um, whether or not people have more capacity or they sit on more committees. Um, so I wonder if we can just get real clear today on, on who's sitting on what committee? Because I'm not even sure where everybody sits. Can we just go around real quick and do that?
Absolutely.
Cool. Um, so right now, I'm liaising with the Citizens Advisory Committee. We do need to recruit more members of that committee so that we can, um, I don't have to chair it. Um, but it's been an important function because otherwise the agenda's in the next decade and the meetings don't happen. Um, and then I'm also our regional representative on the environmental planning representation.
I am the chair for the vice chairman. And she's also on the board of the board of directors. We're all.
Well, yeah. I'll try to.
I'm out of it. I'm chair of the.
And what else?
And Eric, what else?
That was the tax committee. We're all on the board. And then I understand I do have people that are retired, some people have full-time jobs, some people have kids, some people have, uh, a lot of work dependencies. There's no way people perform events and say, hey, you're not any quick, you should be. Like God, you're all part of this city council, it's a huge, huge endeavor. And there is no way to perform a minute to, you know. People are lying.
So, just budget and current.
I'm the president and chair of, as a private citizen, I'm the vice committee for RV and S. Not representing the city, but not, there's no need on some kind of.
Come in. Councilor.
Hi, so I'm the chairman of the board of directors. You know, I'm supposed to represent the city, but I'm the first.
Besides the three, we're all, um, at state level, I'm on two ODU advisory councils for the super. It's a lot to say.
They're still assists with the, uh, rate.
Parade, yeah, that's a massive committee, uh, of like two people.
It's a big job.
The chair is helping with the parade tour.
Yeah, yeah, it means you.
Just come right by my house.
Yeah, we, we didn't really, I follow each other. We just kind of really, I follow each other.
Yeah.
Let's see, I am vice chair of the Phoenix Urban Board. And, uh, with the committee. Urban, no. That's him.
Thank you, everybody, for, um, going through that. I, I want to, I think is, um, missing, I was hoping we could maybe talk about this later, maybe we'll talk to you another time is, um, there's a bunch of regional committees that I feel like, um, we're probably not represented at all. Like there's, um, the TAC and there's another one with like ACTs. So, um, we don't have that list or that I'm aware of, put together of all the regional committees. But we probably should have a better sense of, um, where we need representation where we don't have it, so, um.
Is it have to be a counselor or can it be anyone from the community?
Uh, usually it can be community members too, so we should just think, like, we should get that list together so we will take, adopt more to favor whoever.
Maybe get it out of the website too or something.
Yeah, we have the city committees listed there, but we don't have the regional committees listed.
Yeah.
Like the RV cog and our, and RV MPO. Um.
So maybe some people in the community with some experience.
Yeah.
And try to.
So we just need to create that list.
So we are represented by, by staff, uh, RV, TAC. We're, we're, hey, you're drunk, TAC, right?
I'm on the, uh, RV MPO, right technical advisory.
And also when it comes to water issues, we'll tend, water, water meetings with the water position.
I'm on the Water Commission, Other Cities Water Group, which is a organization of all the other, um, water sea, water, water purchasers, uh, medical water commission, they also live in the water commission.
Also the RV TV long-term plan.
Yeah, the RV TV long, uh, long-range planning, uh, advisory committee, the, uh, for transportation system plan, uh, technical advisory committee and the TAC.
Also to go back to January seventeenth, City Council Act, it will list reverse to all the committees that we have, the committees that are at the regional level.
That doesn't have all the original ones too? That's all I have, I mustn't inspire as much great comment.
You're right. Next up, the discussion of naming of the Phoenix Plaza Park. And the sign where we don't care. It's a little bit refined. But it would be some more. But I think the Phoenix Plaza Park is a name of the plaza park. But much, so deep enough for discussion. I think I actually have another discussion also. But I looked at formal resolution, something naming the park Phoenix Plaza Park. The new park, we got a little tiny little pocket park, a bicentennial park, right back with three ten or three. But then it just didn't need its door in the records. There's no resolution to name that.
Amazing.
It's not a big lot, a little tiny thing, and it's such like, not even marketing, but a little plaque there.
Where's that, three ten?
You know where, um, that new parking lot that you built right behind the three ten or H B dot clubhouse.
Yes.
Right back that park a lot, there was a plaque there for quite a while, a long time. Instead of bicentennial park.
Yeah.
And it wasn't.
Like your map.
Right. But he was saying he couldn't find anything in the records having a resume naming that. Looking for the name, naming that park name.
So it's like the highway named it or something. Like the Oregon State Department of Transportation named it or something.
Well, it was only a customer county a long time ago. And that land had a little park.
And five centennial.
About ninety seventy six.
That's what I was guessing.
Yeah. I said ten year, then five centennial, man.
Have you seen parks in Jack where they have like the smallest park? With like a bench in it? Called it like, India's smallest park, is that what it is, smallest park, am I saying the thing?
Uh, I actually think that's what it's supposed to be.
You mean smaller?
Yeah, it's supposed to be like a couple of them.
So, okay.
How close we are, I'd like to just pick the right staff to come up with a resolution naming the park. Now we've got the ordinance, number nine, um, first reading by total only ordinance number nine nine four. Ordinance, the city of Phoenix, we're establishing offensive chronic nuisances, segmenting and public hearing will be held Monday, June fourth, two thousand eighteen. I think we already had comments from staff, we're going to have comments from staff. Again, we'll do the same thing with last time, we'll have citizens speak, then we'll have deliberations. Remember this first reading?
Sure. Uh, the, when I came to you last time, I had quit, I had, uh, had a little bit different, well, I had a different form than what I now presented to you, uh, for this first reading. The first form completely had adopted the, the state law. And then we just, my, the form I used was using some amendments. And you could just read the amendments, you didn't have to read the whole statute. So, uh, that seemed to be awkward for a lot of people. And then, and I started reading, it became awkward for me. So I understood where people were coming from, so I went back and drawing board and started over again. Uh, and really only changed, uh, the form and not so much substance of, of, uh, of what we're doing. And that was, was, I took those parts of the state statute that dealt with nuisances. And, and again, these are statutes that have been on the books for years and have case law that's written after a case law. Meaning that people went to trial and, and either won or lost in people's matters. And some judge got up and, and discussed a little bit more and defined how the, the rules would work. So it's been around for a long time, it's a true intestine process for, for abatement of nuisances. And there's a process that's in there, and it is a court process as opposed to an administrative process, which is what so many of these other chronic nuisances work on. That is, a police officer or park or a building official makes a decision. And then that person has to deal with the building official and then, and then after that's all done and they get a plan and you figure out how to deal with nuisance and stuff. Instead of all that, then, then that decision can be challenged as a sitting decision. And then, then it goes to circuit court, then you have a court, then they, you know, so it's a whole nother different process. Whereas this process is just, I have a problem, you and I need to figure this thing out. Obviously, we can't figure it out, so we're going to take it to court and then let a judge, who's a elected official of the general law or someone who's, who's trained in the area of law, make that decision. So it works the same principle. And in this ordinance, I put in those sections, uh, as you can read down, uh, you'll see in parentheses O R S one oh five point five oh five. I just draft, I just took that chapter or that section, took it out and used it. But I changed some of the wording in there instead of a sheriff, I used the law enforcement officer. So then that way, we're not talking about sheriffs, we're talking about whoever the officer is that's out there. Uh, so there are those minor kinds of things, the, the Phoenix Police Chief or his or her designated, whatever, the enforcement officer. And then, uh, and then where the classic chronic nuisances are those items that almost every city has. And those are, are actually embedded into the definitions of, of what we're talking about. So here we have nuisances, uh, that are from our own ordinances that are placed, that's a nuisance activity. So they would be, and I gave you, I gave you a memo that explained this, but essentially a whole list of at least ten uh, or twelve, eleven different kinds of ordinances that we have in our own city ordinances that are typical violations that you see that are problems that, uh, who normally would be handled by any chronic nuisance ordinance throughout the state, uh, in cities throughout the state. And then a timeline, which those normally happen. So again, using the, the pattern of other cities' nuisance activities that occur within so many day periods of time. Four more nuisances during any hundred twenty day period of time, and six more nuisances during the three hundred, or one year period. So it looks up, sees that you've done these different kinds of problems. And if, and if you fit within this criteria, then you've got a chronic nuisance on your heat. And again, using the statute, I just changed some of the words, uh, again, formally and fix it so that we can use this as our own and it sets up a whole court process. If you have some state law that you, or, or there is a nuisance that isn't handled like livestock and that, and someone's got a horse that they decide to put in their, or a sheep or something, you can use a different statute because we don't have sheep ordinances in our own ordinance. But you can use the state law to do the same thing essentially. And, and, uh, if it's actually bothering you, uh, that is not our, our practices. But anyway, so that being said, this is the same ordinance that I gave you before, just remodels so that it, it now reads completely. So when you read it, a person would read the whole thing, they don't have to switch back and forth to say, oh, I figured out how it's different. And if anyone wants to, they can look at the state statute, use the name, and actually tell the difference. Oh, I see, this is what he added, and this is what's right, here it is, this is the one. So with that said, you now have, uh, my version of a, of a ordinance for chronic nuisances. It will not solve every problem you had up. There's just some things constitutionally allowed. Someone can get up on their soapbox and, and say a lot of terrible things, and it can bother someone. But we won't be able to do chronic nuisance anymore than we can do with any other. Lloydering is not, is okay, I'm sorry, but I can't make a statute that says you can't hang around in the public square. You want to hang around in public square, that's something that we can't, we don't. So to face it, that, that you've done that three times, or, you know, the law doesn't matter. Uh, those are just, you know, that's just the way the law is. And there's a lot of things in which we either used to do and it was okay, or it wasn't okay, and we got away with doing it more. The law has changed, so now we're not allowed to do certain things anymore. Again, uh, drunken disorderly is, they take the drunk out because that's a disease and we're not allowed to, you know, so. We all kind of think about things, we say, well, pass this away, this is not, so, uh, so it's different now. So there you have it. And I did talk with Stuart, uh, and I did get some questions, uh, from Sarah regarding, uh, you know, some of these issues. And I'm prepared to talk about those with you as well in terms of unintended consequences, which are always a potential for some of the ordinance.
I have a question, I think that we all do, but we don't get out.
Yeah, I'm sure you're fine.
So we're going to open up to public comments. Is anyone that wants to comment on the proposed ordinance?
Ma'am?
Sure.
Ma'am, thank you.
Just come on up, break the time with the council.
Okay.
What's your name?
Thank you. My name's John Cordenier. Uh, I live here in Gaines. I just want to, I, I just want to say, you know, um, we're not trying to, I, I don't want to, uh, push somebody out just because, you know, we don't like, they make us go in. By no means, God bless, we all have a right to it. Um, but that being said, you know, we all have the right to it, um, you know. I love this town, I love this city, uh, for all my life, um, and I love it. I don't want to live next door to trash, it's publicized, and I think that's recent. I don't want to live next door to hypodermic people being left out in the street and on the sidewalk. And on the landscape by inches from my daughter's name. There's no reason we shouldn't have it. And I appreciate, uh, number one, I would like to say, uh, the Phoenix Police Department has done an outstanding job if there was a police chief and both officers. Me and my family, uh, I honestly don't know if we would still be in my home. And that's the truth. So they have done an outstanding job with everybody in that community, in that neighborhood. But I, I, that's all I wanted to say, I just want to say, we're not trying to, and I certainly don't want to, uh, tell someone how to live or, or, uh, in allyship. But God bless, we all, we made it to there tonight, and I think we all had that right. And that's what we're trying to do, is find a new right.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys very much.
Anybody else?
Got you worked up.
Oh, good afternoon, I'm Susan Gill, and I live in the Bronx through what you place. And I just kind of want to reiterate what John said, that we all, we all feel that people can be, can be themselves. I, I believe that, I'm a, I'm a person that likes to live and not live. I don't care what people do in their homes, in the privacy of their homes, it's none of my business. But when they take their business out into the public domain or those children planning, or when it's, aren't it, but it, there's no, there's no respect given to us. And I have to say that the police are phenomenal, the code enforcement guide is great. Um, I feel very reassured when I see them coming by and just kind of giving a gentle sweep. I know that they might not see anything going on, but just to know that they're there is reassuring. And I sometimes I have to leave my home for a week at a time. Um, I did not let the police know that I was going to be gone one time, just to have reassurance that things are going to be checked on. And, um, I didn't feel like I needed to do that the last time I was, I was gone, so I'm feeling a little bit better. But I do have some anxiety about it because, um, these are bad actors. And, and they, I, I don't know who they are, but I know what they are. And I don't want in my neighborhood, and I hope people don't want in your neighborhood. And I really appreciate what you folks are doing to help the city of Phoenix, not just us, but the city of Phoenix, resolve these issues because I, we're not their only homes in the neighborhood. And so if the work gets out, we're going to move on. So thank you very much, I appreciate everything that you guys have been doing, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else? I've got a couple of sentences I've got to read about the issue. I want to go on the table or you can do the questions. Do you guys want to have any questions, well, I want to go down the table. Go ahead and ask the questions. You, you two have a few questions. And let's hear your whole list, so I have a list. Did you hear?
I think it's probably, I'm surprised maybe we just go down.
Then there's a question from the list that aren't addressing the question. But, um, you know, last week was police week. I just want to thank the police officers, who their dedication, tend to step up, take the chance. Appreciate those guys. Some stuff I'm going to say might sound a little bit harsh, but so be it. I don't have a lot of compassion for people that try to legalize others and are the victimizers. I'm not thinking of the victims, but I just want to say, I'd like to give our officers the tools they need to protect the victims of chronic individual nuisance structures where it could be business or home. I think we need some example, and keep our city a nice place to live, with safe streets, safe neighborhoods. When you have more compassion for the victims than the criminals that terrorize Phoenix residents and they can allow a gentleman walking into your neighborhood in AK forty seven, that's terrorizing a neighborhood. Just, you just can't stand for it. Um, I know people spoke here a number of times and felt that they were at the mercy of current criminals. And I believe they are current criminals, and I believe they are at the mercy of current criminals three times when they're in their neighborhood. Um, City Council, part of City Council duty, one of the top duties is to try to keep Phoenix safe and try to keep my neighborhoods safe. I just want to say, don't let the current criminals running a dry house ruin the quality of life of others by their repugnant actions, which is fight for rights of victims and those who are homeless. I've got questions for Doug, but I'm going to stop there. A lot of guys have had their say. Sarah, you want to start?
I forgot my list here.
Okay.
Um, so first, I just want to start by saying that, um, I think a lot of us agree on, uh, a lot of the same issues. Nobody wants our community members to be victimized or feel unsafe in their communities. Um, I think where we come into challenges is we can't base an entire law on, um, on one example. Although this is really important for us to hear from you all, and we definitely are hearing where you all are coming from. We also have to think about the broader application of that law and how it might apply to other scenarios as well. Um, so, you know, in your situation, you're dealing with something very specific, and we're appreciating, but we appreciate that. And we're going to try to deal with that, um, in a way that also makes sure that we cover everything we need to from a broader perspective so that we can make sure what we're doing is legal. Um, and that it doesn't have, we're going to try to mitigate unintended consequences that potentially harm people who have a mental illness, um, and others like that. And I do believe we can strike that balance, I don't think it's one or the other. I think that's black and white and gloomy, and that really doesn't work. Um, so a couple of the questions that I have, um, thank you Doug, one, for putting together the, the Rocky final version. It was a lot easier to read.
Yeah.
Um, and so one of the first questions I had, I've been reading about other nuisance ordinances in other parts of the state, but also other parts of the country. And, uh, one of the things that I want to make sure that we get right if we do this is, um, a lot of the due process issues. Because there's been a number of cities and states that have been sued successfully. Um, and I want to make sure that we aren't getting ourselves into that position because we have the duty to create some laws. Um, so the first question I have has to do with due process. In this ordinance, uh, would the accused have the opportunity to refute evidence against them and dispute, um, whether or not this, this meets the definition of a nuisance?
Uh, they can, uh, they, they would go at each one individually. So you wouldn't, um, wouldn't be able to go back and say, we did, we business placed twenty five times. You'd only be able to talk about the one incident, the second incident, the third incident. Didn't happen within those three, three periods of, uh, within the period of time. Uh, and this would happen in front of a judge, in other words, if a officer or, or if this, if it was a citizen that brought this suit, it would have to be done, um, they, they would have to bring the evidence, they would have to show the dates, the times, and, and what was actually happening, and each one of those would have to be shown by, uh, in this case, each one would have to show by hundreds of the evidence that is more likely than not that it happened. But then that all three of them happened within that period of time, and all of them beyond a reasonable doubt.
So they do, they do have that opportunity then, when it comes to the court level, to make that case in person?
They would make, they would have their case in front of a judge.
Okay. And that's, so there's two different options under this proposed ordinance. Either a citizen can bring suit, um, or the city can determine that there's a chronic nuisance and set up an abatement plan.
Right.
So it, does that apply in both cases?
They wouldn't be able to do it simultaneously. So in other words, one would have to do it or the other, the court wouldn't want to waste its time if you had two cases with identical facts.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the only reason really that the statute is set up that way, uh, is, is it kind of just gives the city the option to prosecute the matter, but wants to prosecute the matter. It could be a, if it's a general nuisance, that is, you might have a, a problem house that's out in the middle of nowhere that's not really bothering anyone, it's not really a nuisance to anyone. But it's still violating all the laws with respect to what you've got, you know, it's a police problem. And we know that, that who's ever generating the stuff ends up coming into town and doing whatever they're doing. So they're trying to get rid of something. Or someone in the future might buy the house. So we know that, you know, if it has methamphetamine manufacturing, we need to stop that, it needs to be abated, it needs to be cleaned. And, and so, so that may only bother the police, but it doesn't bother anyone else in the wide open space. So that's one instance. The other instance might be, a lot of times in my experience, it has been that someone comes to me, they have a lot of complaints. They, they may complain about, you know, and no offense, but I mean, they may come in and they may complain about things in which an AK forty seven or something, they're walking around, and it's kind of like, I'm sorry, but that's legal. And so I'm telling them, no, I can't do it, and they're all upset. So it's kind of like, if you, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to use my city's resources to pursue something that I don't think I have a chance of winning. So if you want to go for it, go for it, but I'm not going, my city's not going to go for it. So that gives the citizen a chance if in some instance, they feel that they can prove the case. Or they may actually have, since these are violations, they may actually have knowledge that police officers don't. I mean, they were talking, what we were hearing out there was is that every time a police officer came in, you know, the people that were drinking in public and doing all this, that all ran off. So they were the only ones that actually saw it, that were touring.
So, and this ordinance has changed that, right?
Doesn't change that.
So, okay, so under this ordinance, if we pass this ordinance, does it actually help to address any of those concerns? So would the AK forty seven thing be a nuisance under this ordinance?
It would not be a nuisance unless.
Be under the open period?
It's an open, yeah, I mean, it would, it would, obviously, if they, if they were going like this point in the circle, they were talking about a practical story, but simply just having an open gun or whatever, which would tend to upset certain people, you know, seriously, that is something in which you, uh, can have a disagree or not.
What's your question, last question regarding the AK forty seven? If they're walking on somebody else's property, walking, going on a different, different topic like I thought they were doing. And walk AK forty seven.
You know, now you've described the situation.
But they should be able to do that every time, because that's trespass. So this means.
Before it happened, if it happened every single day, it would be one of those reasons.
But that's trespass.
Yeah, it's just costing up for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not a misdemeanor, I got that.
So that's what, yeah, so what ends up happening is, is does, are some of these things already resolved just by the fact that there's a law out there and you don't need to have three of them to do what you need to do? And so some of these nuisances may not, even though I've listed them all, I'm not really actually put them into application. So that's probably not, you know, you might have a wood burning one that actually causes more problems than, uh, you know, than some of these other blocks that now, now why would you have to remain?
Um, just sorry, hang in there with me, y'all have just a few more questions. Most of them have to be a due process term of duty, because I want to know what this means for, um, how we're setting up the process.
I don't want you to rush, but we'll take all the time we need to make this right.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so if a person is found to be a violation of a chronic nuisance ordinance by the judge, does that judge, oh, I'm sorry, there we go, um, oh, no, I did. So does the judge have to give them an opportunity to abate the nuisance before they apply sentence? Or can the judge just get immediately to, um, you have to give this person ten thousand dollars?
Okay, so the ten thousand dollars is a limit.
I, I understand that, I understand that.
So, yeah, all right, so, uh, well, it kind of answers some of the other questions that we had before. Judge, 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 judge doesn't have to give you ten thousand dollars. I mean, if we got to the point where there was ten thousand dollar worth of damage that this person did because the house was, you know, destroyed, you know, things had to do and we have to fix it. City had to come in and remove the house, costs ten thousand dollars. I could see where now you at least have ten thousand dollars to work. But as a general rule, no, uh, judge does not have to give a person, uh, that opportunity to abate. They, most judges would, and that's why you have a judge, is they make these decisions every day when they're making decisions as to what is the appropriate remedy. It just just provides remedy for the judge and also gives the judge the authority to force someone to abate a nuisance if that fact is a chronic type of nuisance. So they're not forced to do something, uh, they're only given that privilege, that authority to do something.
So, um, in, in other abatement plans, it's, that I've seen from other parts of, uh, the state and other parts of the country, um, what they do is they put that power into the hands of the city officials, the city attorney, or city manager, and then the, um, city managers, so what we're doing is different from that in that we're putting it to our advantage.
Well, what would typically happen, just saying, you have this kind of case. Normally, they would be talking, you'd be talking with them, the officer would be talking with them, or I would be talking with them. We would be coming up with a plan, and it didn't work, and that was like, okay, you want to fight this all the way down to the end? If you don't really think that you're going to win, then I'll see if I can win. And you see, if you win, if you win, nothing happens to you. If we do, then I get to recommend anything I want to recommend. That's from a prosecutor's standpoint, okay? I mean, that's, that's Mr. Bean talking right now. But, uh, but I mean, to the extent that normally, these are, we don't have, what, what your problem, what I have a problem with the case, your scenario is, is that there's a whole bunch, we've already talked to this, Mr. Jones, your abate process and stuff, and now I'm telling you, you have to abate. And now I'm going to try to go out there with a plan, that plan doesn't work, and now we have to go to a further judge anyway. It's like, let's skip all that, let's just, we've had enough problems with you, and it's not just three, I guarantee it. I mean, I asked, no, no, uh, police officers who's going to walk in at a free time and say, this is what we need to do, what they, whatever. This, this is a chronic problem nuisance issue in which, okay, I'm giving you now three more, you know, here's your cha- chance number one, this is that twenty fifth violation, okay, one. You know, kind of like, you know, you argued with a kid for the last, you know, month, now it's, okay, I put my foot down. I give you three chances left, and that's kind of where you are with these things.
Yeah. Um, let me start how I clear my other thoughts.
Please never come, I mean, they always tend to be real late in the game and say, we are really having a problem with this thing, what do we do? While we got this chronic nuisance, okay, then let's, let's work on that in line with the barber.
Try to set the meal right.
I have a question, I'm not saying something.
Yeah.
Um, eight point two, two point five one five, is that relative to this, the state issuing some warrant to evade? That a foreign order to evade is made or warrant to evade is issued, defendant may motion to the court or judge to enter an order to stay the issuing of the warrant up to six months.
So that's where they can, that's, that's what you would do before the warrant, uh, they can say, please, and then, yeah, for the possession. And see, and again, there's, here for the statutes had, uh, been around a long time because they've gotten these events issued before. So yes, that's exactly where it's.
And that's why I asked that question, and I'm curious what that part is, is the judge has to do it, or discretionary, or it's discretionary?
It is discretionary. It is discretionary, but typically, you know, uh, I just, abatement for really serious issue, and no judge necessarily wants to do it, until they actually have to do it. So, yeah, they would, they give a chance, yeah, I mean, we all, that's just, yeah, we all give, we give a chance all the way along, generally. Now, not always, and that's where you get sued, you know, that's where you.
Right, so consistency is really important in the way to fight laws, and you can't always get that discretionary, and so I'm just trying to clarify where there's discretionary options and where there's not.
No, we actually had an issue like this, well, about a year and a few months ago, regardless of what doesn't work or not. And that individual had to submit a, a plan to our home management, and that plan has to be, um, satisfied before that place could be opened up. And it was done without any court involvement, it was on the basis of, you know, that was happened. I think we're talking about it now, it's a little bit different, but it's a good point to go.
Just definitely, yeah, it was, get that part of the question. Um, so another question for you, that, please, your building was very, um, another question is, uh, just about injury kind of stuff. Um, and whether or not those ordinance, my question is, whether or not this ordinance puts us in a better position, um, to prove that things are happening? So, let's say that, um, I called the police because my, uh, neighbor's dog is barking, and that's a, a noise violation. Um, what if the police get there and the dog is no longer barking? Is that, uh, based on, I started trying to think, where does, who has to prove it? How did that operate, and then do we get in the same situation that we're already in?
The violations in this state are that an officer has to see a violation. With this ordinance, a person can actually prosecute the matter. So it doesn't have to be just officer to see the violation. So if you have three instances where officer wasn't there in time to see what actually happened, then citizen could actually put that case on.
Or just.
They just have to provide evidence, you know, their video, their, yeah, their video tape or their conversations or wherever they, you know, would. Yeah, you oftentimes see the aftermath of a violation, so if the bottle's on the ground and he picks it up, the most. In this one, I'm not sure if the officer were bringing it, whether or not you would be able to, if they didn't actually see one of the violations, whether you could use one of those citizens to testify that they saw it.
Can I guess in there?
No, no, it's, it's, if the citizen would come in and say, I saw the violation, but, um.
Okay, so that's interesting, I didn't realize that that's, um, part of the way that that would function is that, so I guess they'd have to make their case in front of the judge, and the judge has to decide whether or not those violations actually occurred.
That's exactly right.
Okay, interesting, alright, um.
And would be helpful though from a standpoint of proof, I mean, as an attorney, I would rather have to be able to, just like, uh, like Rico, like the right hearing, it's always nice to have seven or eight crimes going on. Then you don't have to sep- show each one separately, you can kinda just, you show the whole, all the bad, it's, it's a long story. But it'd be easier for someone to prove, having three violations, to be able to prove one. In other words, he did this, he did this, he did this. Normally you can't bring in bad acts and show that he did something, but when you have all three violations, you get to kinda show all three of them. More likely than not, a fact finder would say, well, I get it, you know, it sounds like there's pattern here, that's it.
Okay, that's really helpful, um, one last thing I wanna ask is about, um, so clearly we're, we have talked about, you know, victims of violence, and how there could be like a chilling effect, um, people could be afraid to call the police because they might be afraid that they get some of these strikes, and then, um, they'd be, uh, beat out, um, but, so do you think, do you feel like the piece that you added around, um, victims, and that they should be, um, I, I forget exactly what the wording is, but so they should not be held liable for, um, for.
Right, you're trying to exempt them from having to pay anything if anything should happen, or those type of things.
So will, will that, so I worry about, let's say there's, you know, um, there's fighting happening, and then somebody called the police, and then three, that's three nuisances, um.
Loud noises and they're screaming and yelling, and no business.
So, but, will that fighting still count as a nuisance? Could that potentially end up in somebody being brought to court if, you know, if people, like, a woman is.
Well, there's a disorder, let's say there's a disorderly conduct and it happens, and there's three of them out there on the, you know, on the street. And, uh, it's all emanating from this one house.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he, that, that would ordinarily be a chronic nuisance problem. However, uh, if the person is, one of those persons is, you know, constantly being, you know, is, is, is the victim, for instance, or is, you know, it's always disorderly conduct, it's not a very good one, but assault. But if, it could be, if, if you had that kind of situation, the way I have it written is, you're, this victim would be entitled to relief from prosecution if they're shown that they really weren't the, the underlying cause for what was the nuisance.
So they, they wouldn't be held liable?
Yes, and that's kinda, and Stuart and I, Mr. Warren, excuse me, uh, we were talking about this, and, and his concern was is that it was coming at the back end of this, as opposed to the front end. Someone who goes, well, I sure hope that when this is all done, uh, I'm considered a victim. You're kinda betting when you call nine-one-one that two will be, you know, considered the victim. So I made some suggestion, I talked with Mr. Warren, and, and I'm sure you, you might, we can talk about that in a minute, so if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Then he can kinda, because there is some other language that I thought about adding.
And I have read a couple of articles about, um, how other chronic nuisance ordinances have disproportionately impacted the, um, the victims of domestic violence, you know, of kids, and those are populations I wanna protect too, as, you know, women and children. Um, and, you know, they're not a quality either, and so I worry about, um, also like what we can do, um, just from a practical standpoint, of making sure we don't create a chilling effect where people are afraid to call the police because they're afraid that they'll be, um, held liable for this nuisance law. And, you know, because I want women who are victims, or anybody who's a victim of abuse, to be able to, um, get the help they need.
And when I wrote this, I was trying, I was aware, and not in every, I, I didn't see the, you sent me some articles in the paper. Uh, and I wasn't aware of all those particular articles, but I was aware and had been aware when I was writing this, that this is an issue that needs to be addressed, and that if you're going, it doesn't ever stop, you know, a city from being sued if something happens wrong, or they enforce the law differently or wrongly, and it's not appropriate. But as long as you have trained officers, and we do, and as long as, as, uh, you know, our community, I think, is small enough that it's not, you know, it's not larger communities where people get lost in anonymity, and they go out and do things they shouldn't be doing that, you know, represent the city. We have close enough knit, and also kinda how we pursue things, that we're not out there looking for different persons or trying, we're, we're actually trying to protect certain people.
Yeah, I know.
And so I wrote it that way.
Yeah.
Um, sensitive to that, I should say, yeah.
Um, thank you for helping me answer some of these questions, it gives me a better sense of clarity about what this would actually do, um, so I appreciate that a lot.
Okay, good.
Mr. Warren.
All right. Um.
You'll have to get another one, a pair of them.
No, that's fine, okay. Um, so my conversation with, with Doug was really based on the fact that, you know, there are these provisions in here for victims of domestic abuse, but it's on the back end of things. So, you know, say they come to the house three times, you know, the poor, well, please, man, this example's been beat up over and over and over again, and the neighbors keep calling in the house, so finally, you know, the police are able to come in three times, they arrest an individual, maybe they arrest both of them. Say, we need to remove this issue, this is an issue. And, and meanwhile, we're gonna pull off the supermits from the home, so you both are kind of out in the street. And say this, one, the victim is someone who's of low income, they don't have the money to find a new place to live, so they're automatically out in the street. So they're still the victim, but yet they still have this, okay, well hopefully, you know, the, the courts can find out I'm the victim, and then, you know, my wife or husband or whatever is going to repay them out to relocate. But that still puts this person out in the street, so that's my main concern with it, is that, that, you know, using the, the front end versus back, back end language. This law allows those protections for that victim on the back end, right, on the aftermath, after everything's gone down. They, basically they get out of the home, and there's nothing they can do about it. And so that's my main concern with this whole thing, and so I asked Doug to try to come up with some language for that. I don't know, Doug, do you would like to address that?
Well, I can, I'll tell you what I did, and that is, is that when we talk about nuisance activity, which is on your, uh, page, it was the year, eight point two, two point five one zero. And it goes through and defines that definitions, and it talks about nuisance activity. And at the very bottom of that, uh, you get to see offenses enumerated in, uh, vehicle traffic. Okay, this panel doesn't use an operative, vehicles, okay, there's that. And after that, I would say, notwithstanding enumeration of those offenses in this section, any reasonable suspicion, which is a police officer's term, and some which it's less than probable cause, you just have to kinda like reasonably establish. That activities, behaviors, or criminal conduct related to or associated with circumstances of domestic violence or family violence as defined under the, under our statutes are not subject to this chapter, so we're just eliminating. So in other words, you're coming in and you're going, I'm not gonna be able to use chronic nuisance in this situation if I know there is domestic violence going on here. We can eat, dress other ways, but abating of a house is not gonna be, or abatement of a house, or being rid of a house is not, or putting it stop, or pulling the permits, not, it's not what. So I just did up front, that's great, and I think that, you know, I mean, again, I think it would address most issues again, I don't think, it's not too much officers thinking too much about abating the nuisance when they're dealing with domestic violence, but the event that should ever happen. For someone who would never feel like, you know, they can always say, ma'am, don't worry, you can call nine-one-one if this ever happens again. You don't have to worry about it, we're not gonna be kicking down your house.
That's really my biggest concern, because a lot of the examples I've found where this became a tissue for those members, those, those, those examples of domestic abuse. You know, the, the victim got to round two, and the police officer said, one more time and you're out. And then, you know, she ended up getting literally, you know, sent to the hospital because she was too afraid to call the police.
There, there is one other thing I just started thinking about too, if you point this out to, and that is, is that, um, actually when we were, when I was working on, uh, the chronic violator ordinance. We came to the point where we said, okay, you do this three times in a plazid area in your, your house. But, but part of that process was you were handed an actual document, a map shows this is the area that you're subject to. And this one, here's your map, and the laws right there on the back of that map explained everything. Says, if it says if you do it three times within a six month period of time, so just so you know, you're on notice. Here's your one, here's your first notice, and you get it. And so then, they would write on their ticket basically a star showing that they in fact gave that person notice of the, of the violation, so that when they got three, they would bring that into me, and then I would chart front, uh, persistent violation. So you could theoretically, if you wanted to bolster this a little bit more, you could probably put in your, a little more process so that by the twenty-fifth time, okay, I'm at it, here's your tar, number one, this, this is your first violation. We're now on the path of chronic nuisance, if this happens three times. And a lot of this stuff will actually start resolving itself now that they do know that there is a potential, now we know, you need business, that works quickly. Here's your, here's your presumed sentence.
Yeah, um, I, I think that's great, I really appreciate that, you know, I guess the issue that I ran to is that, I think a lot of these examples probably be places of, uh, people who are low income, so typically, and let's say typically here, people of, of lower education and understanding, maybe unable to read. Um, and also, uh, um, in a lot of cases, five people with above, you know, uh, different backgrounds, different colors, different, uh, nations' origins. So maybe different languages as well, so in the case of a Spanish speaking person, you know, do we have the capability of explaining to these people how this law would work correctly in their favor or against them to, I have a concern there. So no, we have some Spanish speaking officers, but it doesn't sound like we have a, just one, we have one Spanish speaking officer, so that, maybe sort of like also, if, you know, would we have the ability to explain this properly if somebody who doesn't speak Spanish doesn't, can't read through the law and truly comprehend it correctly? Uh, I think, I mean, that's a major thing about what law we use.
Right, I mean, I could see that being an issue when the time comes up. And I, I don't know, uh, if it's absolutely necessary to put a bilingual, you know, provision in here, that's no reason. Again, when we get to that stage, that's, normally everyone's working together, uh, to make sure that everyone understands this law on. And that's been my experience, working with law enforcement, you know, like, well, what are we doing here? I think we're very likely to happen to, you know, with law enforcement here, that we do have, you know, and, of course, it's always something changing. And we're making these laws, it's not just for this one example, or for the next ten years, that's something we have to be making, you know, aware of for hundreds of years potentially. Hopefully, well, I saw a bunch of nineteen sixty-nine ordinances in here, you know, they were a little different.
Right, and so I guess that, I can segue us to my next question here, this, you know, so I'm always cautious of, of, uh, being reactionary. Particularly to one example, and I, I really feel for you folks, I, I'd love to be able to come over and help myself if I can. But I wanna be, I wanna do my due diligence, and I don't just wanna be reactionary and make the law based on one example. And so I'm hoping maybe that I can ask a chief a couple of questions, if he's okay with that. Put you, you know, put you in the, the line like. But I guess the main question is, you know, outside of the current example reading, have you guys experienced situations where this ordinance would be useful?
Possibly, the house that burned down on the walls prior to the burning down, um, a lot of issues there. I won't, I won't say a lot of issues, but several issues there. It was force known, force entered, the person held the house, their daughter was a bit, her father, so maybe usually just call her. Supermoral, but for longer, get them straightened out, but, um, it is very difficult to say. To be honest with you, my police officers, when they're out, when I respond to the calls and things, the last thing on their mind is the city's codes.
Right.
Their, our story with it, um, and so it's, we've had, uh, the barking dog calls at certain houses, however, you know, we, we've been able to remedy, um, we've been able to remedy all the issues long before we get anywhere into this ordinance. So, I mean, you know, we sent him over to all code violations, and he sits down with the nurse, and says, here's a copy of the code, whatever the code is, says here's what you need to do, and then up, on the back, two weeks, or, you know, if they have a barking dog, here's, here's my suggestions as far as, you know, where you can put the dog, you know, around and things like that. You know, we've been able to, that, prior to even coming close to where. The, the police department has not been in the, in the, uh, business of property acquisition, I, I can tell you that, you know, that's the last thing that we would be involved in.
Well, my, my understanding, this doesn't have a provision that we're being able to take. No, it's just, it's the big, right, so, I mean, we're not bringing, like, in that with property, just to say, okay, you can't stay there until, you know, it's abated, right?
Right.
And then I'm gonna leave.
Leave, probably. Jumped here, the building down and stuff.
And then to bring it back to this turn, do you think this ordinance would help with the problem we're experiencing on Orchard Place?
You know, I would, I would have to really delve into the ordinance, uh, as far as, you know, if we get this type of nuisance one week, and then we get a barking dog the next week, does that constitute two within the week? To me, I would say no, if, if their weeds are too high one week, and so later on that week, they cut their weeds down, and next week their dog's barking, you know, is this, is this your second strike? It's two different. I would say no. I know our mini court judge would definitely say no. I have a pretty good handle on what our mini court judge, how he looks at things. And it's, I mean, we, I know that we've responded over there four, I want to say four or five times for their loose pit bull. We've handled that. As far as we just had animal control come up, hold the dog off, then they have to come in, pay however many notes to get your dog back out of animal control. And so I haven't seen any calls on that specific thing. So, you know, it, it's hard to say. A lot of, a lot of calls that came in were suspicious persons or suspicious vehicles. You know, just because a car that you don't recognize is parked on your street, you know, I, I don't think that falls under the nuisance ordinance. We have to find something outside of, you know, just a car being parked there or something like that. So it, it's hard to say exactly how far we'd be into this process.
I have a couple of questions for you. There was a one way to cross from the mid-market.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
And yes, well, there were two of them.
But yes. Side by side, like one worse than the other. Okay? Would ordinance like this have helped close that place down sooner than, than we did? That would have happened time.
Well, I mean, the, the issues we were having there, well, one of the houses, one of the houses, I would say, yes, I, we would, we would have had more to go on as far as trying to get the occupants out of there. I think the, I think the issue we were having was when we go to a property, we try to deal with landlord and get the landlord to do something. That way we don't really get that involved with it. I think our issue there was the landlord was just happy that there was somebody that was actually paying rent for that property, for how many people that would have moved into that property. And so she really didn't want to do anything with it. But this ordinance, I believe, could have helped us put more pressure on her and on the tenants.
This ordinance is a very, 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 very lax. Would you like to have us do a toolbox?
It, it would be helpful, yes. And I think just, just having it there, I mean, I have a lot of things in my garage. My wife says, why you have that? I don't know. Maybe someday I'll use it.
I think one of the, you know, one of the benefits of this also is just that you can bring it in a conversation with these properties too.
Right.
You know, we've been coming for, you know, weeds are one thing and there's some gray area. But, you know, you've had these parties, like, here's our ordinance, here's how many times it's called within this period. You already get two. You know, I don't know how the judge is going to look at it, but you're starting to risk that should be a twenty. So it seems like part of the dialogue that might help to swing.
Right, I mean, it's always beneficial to us when we can actually take a document and say, here's what this says, here's what's going to happen if you don't, you know, change this behavior, this, this is what, what could happen. So, and most people, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of people will look at that, read that, say, okay, I need to quit doing this stuff. That way the police won't be called over here. You know, you're always having the point zero-one percent that, I'm like, my property, my house, I'll do whatever I want.
Be ready for any sales. Or is this a surprise business? You know, okay, so I got this twenty-five dollar ticket for my house. Anybody else have a question? Is there any more questions?
No. Mr. Snyder.
Mr. I want to thank you. Okay. If you wrote a document, I can read without making my mind hurt. Legal matters. You've accomplished something.
That, that is very good to hear.
No, I'm, I'm serious about that. It's nicely written. When the chief was talking, I think what I heard him say made me not understand what's here. On page ninety, the place to which, and these will be number of instances per unit time to be violations. My understanding was that it could be any of the ones above and not necessarily three of the same thing.
That's correct.
So that's a little different than I heard him saying on the enforcement side. And I realize that there are some things that are important, but that is correct. It can be three different types of things as long as they are real and they're within the per unit time.
Right. And, and again, and I think the chief was excellently pointed out that there's so much discretion on whether or not you want to use that. It may be available to you, and I really want to use this one for this. So that's all part of that discussion. And when you get to a judge, that, that's the ultimate discussion that.
Yeah, it's good to have it.
And, oh.
The one thing I do have more of for, for curiosity, on page eighty-nine, the middle, we've got five point two, five ten features for page.
Five ten.
The last sentence says, the enforcement officer may require that the plaintiff pay all enforcement officer's fees as established by the city regulation. The enforcement attorney may require that the plaintiff officer pay all expenses for the enforcement officer occurring in the court. I have no idea what the magnitude of the cost on it, but it's actually a barrier to somebody being able to take that step.
Well, the, the, again, is a lot of these are, are homeowners or, or landowners. And so they do have the where we call as general or should have where we call. They're going to be renting spaces out and most of the things that you have a where we call. They'll pay those costs. So this is just a provision that's provided for in the state statute. And, and there are expenses and fees that have to be paid because of your problem. And it's not just a penalty, it's back, you know, paying back what the city had to spend to do it. So that's, that's how that, that's how this works. And again, it's provided for in the statute, so I just, I swiped it and put it into our ordinance.
Okay, now according to what's there?
Is it a barrier to someone being able to afford, means be able to do that? Maybe there's a lot of barriers for a lot of things. And so that's probably one of the reasons why they probably wouldn't want to do it. In other words, they wouldn't want to get themselves in this kind of situation. If I have to end up paying for all this, maybe, you guys are serious? It's like, yeah, I'm serious. You want to do it, you're going to pay. And if not, we get a judgment and then we force you to pay. In other words, we give pill tabs and all the other kinds of things, like some standing.
Another second question. The only comment I have is I cruised around a couple of people's houses this weekend. I had a lot of sensitive people. Everyone I talked to was supportive of it. You know, and the general consensus was definitely need to have the teeth to be able to do this, but also we need a balance in property rights and so on. Looking at this and looking at the job of trying to manage this.
Yeah, I, I keep the ability to pay the, the garage sale fee out there.
Nice. It was nice to buy it back to you. So it was nice to meet you.
No, what, you good?
Yeah.
Sorry. Good questions already. I'm ready to deliver it. I have a question for the court.
Well, this is a first reading, so, and if you want me to add that language that I suggested to you, which was that, that, that if there's suspicion, reasonable suspicion of, of domestic violence or family violence is defined under the statute, then there would be something to check correctly. Happy to add that piece of language in there and then we can have full deliberation on this type of reading.
One of the one button up that one issue I can question also, but are you guys okay with adding that language? Can I ask you something?
Okay.
So can I just clarify about courts? I mean, so that means that, so if there's reasonable suspicion that police officers think that domestic violence, that it would count towards like one?
That's right.
Okay.
The officer would just say, I'm not, I'm not, it would have to be, the police team would have to know if it came in. In other words, did you have reasonable suspicion that those domestic violence? I don't have that a little bit.
What the ordinance talks about says conduct that occurred on or within two hundred feet of the property. What we talk about, farewell, tears back, your, what type of property line, property line? The property line is required to come to the property line to the front door of a marijuana establishment. Is this two hundred feet property line or property line?
Uh, it would be, you know, persons, you know, again, I'm sure there's all different shapes. Because I did it, but I mean, if it was two hundred feet off the corner of the property, this is the closest point that was within two hundred feet, then yeah, you could literally measure it. And that might be one of those bases where your honor was actually two hundred and one feet. You know, this is where my picture would be.
Then you would have to apply.
Yeah, right. So then the ordinance would apply. So it would be two hundred, you know, from the property boundary.
So property boundary, that's, that's the, it's bottom line, the bottom line.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. And then that's why I was reading. One of them under eight point two-two-five-six-zero, eight-two-two-point-five-six-zero. And it's on page ninety-one. It's on this, uh, eight-two-two-point-five-six-zero. Does an action through strange ring join a nuisance describing the law shall only be brought by the enforcement officer, the state attorney, if they're in a routine or person designing or doing business in the city of Phoenix. I feel much more comfortable. And this is the way I thought it was. And Sarah and I, she had asked a question last week and I clarified it. It was under my understanding that the person bringing the action in the court has to be the city attorney. So the police come to the city attorney, the attorney in turn brings the action to the municipal court here in Phoenix. I feel much more comfortable, lower chief, and, you know, with chiefs change. And I'd rather have that. No, not, not after you're sorry. I have a wonderful, I have a fifty year old. Sorry, you're in me. You didn't see the next one. I just thought of the attorney. I, I like to have that one barrier. I really have a gold phone view to the report as opposed to the officer from his report. But maybe if you want to.
Well, it's a violation, it's general rule, it's not a crime. I think it's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. The rule would happen is law enforcement would bring in their report and say, I've got three of these. And they would convince the city attorney that they have a provenable case. Just, just like the dude that, you know, was provenable cases. And they don't talk necessarily. I think that.
The, the cases might be to prove to all the people.
Yeah. Never can imagine. Chief, the only, the only issue that I, that I would see is that since you have your legal counsel basically prosecuting them, I think the city would be all good to get them. Even though it is a violation, violation and not a crime. I, I think that, because basically now you have, you have a certified educated attorney from legal mumbo jumbo. A citizen, you know, with a high school education or, you know, a bachelor's degree. Something that has nothing to do with, and I think, I think the court will see that as being unfair.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that little reason. It's just like a traffic ticket. When we write, when we, when we write a, somebody speeding violation, okay? When you come to court, it's the officer against that person unless, and they, it's on the citation. So if you have paid legal counsel, you need to notify the Phoenix Police Department so that if, if I feel as the officer, okay, I, I'm scared of attorneys. I don't want to go with these attorneys, but it never happens. Who would be attorneys to it? But so that the city can have there as well. And that's, and that's exactly how I wrote it here was, I was thinking of this. I, I can't remember whether, I have to go back to the five sixty. But it may, let me go back to the original five sixty. But I think, well, guys, with that said, I'll just retract my, I'm not married to it, okay? And that, that was it for me. More discussion. So I'll entertain a motion. I'll, well, these, what's the second, go to second reading?
Right.
And then I'll have that final, I'll have that one change in there. And then if there's, then you can go through deliberation at that point. I mean, if this is good, I mean, you're telling me what you need in this right now, what needs to be changed. And, and that's good. And then when the second reading comes, then you can deliberate on whether it's a good idea or make up my.
But we still do need to have a, a motion to approve a first reading.
Yes.
Along with the change.
That's all you need to do.
Right. I'll move to approve first reading with the amendment, the changes. More discussion. I'll give a little call please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Shunt.
Yes.
Counselor Snyder.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Westover.
Yeah.
Counselor Warren.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is item nine B, first reading with panel holding ordinance, nine nine-five ordinance. So the city of Phoenix adopting fees for building permits and inspection fees. Anybody want to add to this? We actually passed this as a resolution before, but we know it has to be in ordinance.
Yes, I'm going to get a leak by a director. State law requires that we pass and approve all building permit fees by ordinance. So that's what we're doing. There is no change to the schedule in front of you from what was put in the resolution a while back. This does not affect that because they're still not going to go affect until July. So we have not updated our fees since two thousand and eleven. Since that time, it's been a bit of a. We have also updated the fee schedule to be a little bit more consistent with current permitting and the classification and types of permits that we do. This will also allow us hopefully to create some new permit forms that are a little easier to use and don't have a whole bunch of categories that we don't use. So that is all. And there was a question going into this about whether or not this would do anything for us because of some work that State Building Co.'s division has been doing regarding building officials. I am very happy to report that they have dropped that. And so it may resurface, but probably not for at least another year. So there is no reason to not move forward with adopting the fees.
I have one question regarding the fees. If one fee is an inspection outside of normal business hours, is eighty-five hours? An inspection during normal business hours are eighty-five hours. That's just a misprint or?
Um, well. So, I suspect that would simply need to allow them to do an inspection outside of business hours and have a fee for it. Have to refer that to reckless code codes, but occasionally they might do one outside normal hours if they're feeling fine. I suppose.
More questions?
Okay, thanks, Evan. Thank you.
We'll make a motion. We're going to do a public comment. Not to the second reading. And we approve on the first reading that title only of an ordinance of the city of Phoenix to adapt them. Proposed building permit fee schedule to move the ordinance to second reading. More discussion?
More discussion?
Counselor Warren?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Shunt?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yeah.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Westover?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd love to discuss your signature though. Just kidding. We'll get that, that zocker in the future. Staff report and
I, I have, that's the truth.
The city manager is not here right now. We can back that Friday. So the council comments. We'll start here, we're sure I'll start.
I'm glad that we're moving forward with the, the nuisance ordinance. Thank you for doing such a good job writing that out. It's important that we protect the innocent that might be living in that home. It's also important that we protect the, the neighbors and it looks like you had a good talk with both, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, second that, thank you very much. I mentioned it earlier too, but I think that Garage Sale was a really neat biller. A lot of people were talking to a lot of neighbors and it's a good conversation with people. So I think it was a nice opportunity for people to get out of their house and mix a little bit and mingle. It was good, I'm happy with it.
I agree with what they said. I appreciate the work that you put into the, into the what you did. And I, and I also enjoyed driving around Phoenix and seeing as many people that were out and about and, and talking with the people came from other cities, so I really appreciate it.
I was waiting for the phone to stop. I'm gonna be hurting, I'm apologizing. Yeah, once again, sincerely thank you for the clarity of the right quality of product. And while I didn't make any control for the driving from around to I appreciate this, precious sunshine there for the, I guess, for you.
Yeah, also thank Doug and Chief for answering questions. For ordinance. We had a parks agreement commission meeting last Thursday where we talked about the budget procedures and how to ask for permission before we buy things. It's good, just always good to continue that conversation. We're working on kind of tightening up the ship, I feel like, on that, on that commission right now, it's East City USA noticed that on our public flyers about recruiting members to the commissions that they were not listed on there and they'd like to give us to come by next Sunday, do a, do a task. Great, thank you. And, yeah, Greg, it was awesome, rough draft of the next five years for capital group projects for kind of cool way to look at it. We're all interested in how this show you, sure, I appreciate you. And we've got doggies this summer coming up next, July twenty-eighth. We're starting the subcommittee meetings for that here in the next couple of weeks, so everyone wants to be involved in the planning, organizing that. We can always use that to enhance.
So, just a few things, so the dealers, I really appreciate how much time they took to and multiple tasks you helped us with. I think it's really important to have clear and laws that we applied, so thank you for that, and that balance is, I think that's also really important for the city law. So a few things, I just wanted to report back, so I think all of our committee commissioners and the mayor myself attended the planning of players meeting and Evan attended too, who else? And it was kind of a two-day thing. The first day was just about, it went over the, the statewide planning goals and it went over how to not get in trouble between like the difference between legislative and the laws and judicial functions that committee commissioners and city councils can do. So that's been really informational. And then the second day I stayed for the whole day of planning, planning training, and there was a training both about the housing crisis and the Jackson County Housing Authority, you kind of presented along with Matt Brayley, our former city player, about some of the things that local cities are doing, which is really interesting. And then the second piece was processes. And that was also really interesting because we're moving into that. And then the, the last thing I wanted to let folks know about, so we had our last citizens advisory committee meeting on the sixteenth. And we decided that we needed to, we're setting up a meeting currently right now with some of the friends and stakeholders from like thousands of Oregon and DLCTD because we want to make sure that we're communicating with them upfront about what we need to actually get our UGV application passed. And so we'll report back from that meeting when that happens. It looks like it's gonna happen June twelfth. So I'll report back to and the last thing is we have the RVMPO meeting tomorrow and we are discussing potentially allocating our STBG funds for the city of Austin for a road project.
I consider, so I looked at the CPAC meeting and learned that our four and five acre, page five, may not be able to broaden all at once, that was my assumption before. And page ten, I guess, we're talking about peace mailing it in. I'm like, what? I'm freaking out, we're gonna have to lift those people together and do something. And talk about the rich, uh, we're trying to get some people together, I don't know if you even heard of that, but we're looking at taking it all at once versus peaceful. It just worries that, that's the way it was moving. Hopefully they're gonna go that way and get the whole thing all at once. So that I don't have to provide until, and if I have to stay for four land to build a home, four land to build homes, it's like, man, we're gonna have to the housing crisis here in the valley for life, but I can't see why government would say, no, you can't have additional land to build more homes without the housing crisis. Just, uh, just for there was a horseshoe trip in the week. A couple, two months ago, we refurbished horseshoe bits and the horseshoe crew that the guys that go there and the turn is still happy with it, it's great. They had one term with sixty people down from Portland, one people down from Eugene, from small state, horseshoe bit, great. At the meeting, I wondered for directors for RBE, what are the things we're trying to do is get more broadband to the rural areas of Jackson County. They have to let it, give it a break while the committee, they can open up broadband channels or TV channels to the rural areas and along, we have the copper work for that and the infinite service of rural communities. I love that, Road Valley Cricket District meeting, the budget meeting, do differently. And through the meeting, it came up that Road Valley Cricket District has such large meetings, they need to go out there and rent a room at a hotel. Sounds like you can give a roomkeeper, right? So, that's massive with RBE, maybe they can rent our, our, our facility versus using a hotel.
We are actually looking.
Yeah. So
Right on, but that's my
Have to give it that. And then lastly, some of the demo you saw here that were recorded meeting, it was seven they were out there working away on Saturday, Sunday, and busting it out. Something that looks great, that will fly to the luck, if we got approved, fly there for Memorial Day, it's very nice over there. That was it. We're going to adjourn our meeting and we're gonna be going to, leave back for the session. Okay?
Bye.